Welcome to the City Commission meeting this November 21st, 2023. Thank you for being here tonight. I see there are a few folks in the audience tonight. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome and we appreciate your being here tonight. We begin our meetings with the pledge and we do get through a few housekeeping issues. There are no presentations tonight, so that will certainly allow us to begin.
I think there's something, I was hoping something tonight that the CRA approved.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm taking care of that. And there are certain housekeeping items that we'll take care of, but before we get into the evening meeting, we do need to recess the evening meeting so we can go into the CRA board meeting and take care of a couple of items because there's something there that needs to be addressed and dealt with before we get into the evening meeting. So I will, what's the word I'm thinking of? I will recess the, the, what?
Do you want to do the pledge, the persons here to do it?
What's that?
Do you want to do the pledge of allegiance, the?
No, I don't want to do any of that. So recess the evening meeting so we can begin the CRA board meeting and if the clerk could please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
President.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Chair Beasley-Pitman?
Here.
Commissioner Sturman?
Here.
Chair Trentalles?
Here. So moving on to the agenda, just want to make sure I'm on the right agenda here. I'm on the wrong one here. Hold on, here we are. Okay, we have M1, motion approving the minutes for the November 7th, 2023 Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Do I hear motion to approve?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley-Pitman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and M1 is approved. M2, this is a motion appropriating unspent remaining Northwest Progresso Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Agency funds, fund from the 2023 fund balance. Do I hear motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry, but just wanted to let you know and the commission as well that we updated this item after receiving response or feedback from certain members of the commission yesterday during our agenda review. We re-looked at the proposal and put forth a proposal that focuses on allowing us to do more affordable housing opportunities. And so what you will find is an updated commission action memo that funds paying the debt down. And so that also would allow us to focus on housing projects in this fiscal year. So just wanted to let you know about that modification.
Any questions?
I was going to ask that, the city manager just explained what the new item is. If you could just go into a little bit more detail for us. I had a conversation with the city manager regarding these funds and it was my intention to have the amount, which was $6 million, go to completely to affordable housing. But if you can just explain so we all will understand how the monies are being reallocated.
Sure, I would like to also ask Yvette to come by, if she's in the audience, or Parth, to explain the transactions. Essentially, since we heard, as the vice mayor said, feedback about how can we promote or do more with housing, one of the opportunities that we had was with the unspent funds allocated towards three things. Number one is a qualified project. Number two is something that was in the master plan or pay down debt, or if not, return the funding back to the agencies, sponsoring agencies. And as a result, what we did is we looked at some of the projects that were on the pipeline that were yet to be approved, and there's one that will be coming up in the near future. In order to accommodate for that project, what we did was we pursued, instead of paying $6 million and putting that towards Carter Park, which is a qualified project, we looked at paying down the debt near $4 million in order to afford us the opportunity to have an additional $4 million available this fiscal year for a housing project that will be coming before you in the very near future. With that said, then $2 million would be available to support a project at Carter Park. As you know, since the design, the start of the design of Carter Park, the costs for construction have increased and we have right now a gap of $12 million. And so we were looking at using part of the unspent funds, $6 million, to support that gap. However, again, because we received feedback that it would be necessary to prioritize affordable housing, we made these adjustments and we put that proposal before you.
So if I could also kind of chime in on that, when we talked, I had brought up another, what I think would be a qualified project under the CRA's plan. The CRA plan provides for affordable housing as one of its components, as I recall from my years of looking at the CRA's plan. And we have what I think would be a qualified project on some city property over there. I know there was a question that came up about us not having an approved developer for it, but we don't need to do that. We have designated projects in the CRA going back for 25 years without actually having had a developer. In fact, the process is you designate a project and then you go out RFP for a developer. So I believe in this case, if we wanted to, and certainly I'm not going to, you know, to tell the district commissioner what kind of project she wants in her neighborhood, but certainly that would be an option, would be to designate that city-owned parcel as a qualified project and appropriate the money towards that and then we could go out for an RFP on that parcel. So help me understand, and again, I appreciate you coming back with an alternative here and so thank you to staff for the creative approach, but I'm just curious as to why the, you know, option I proffered doesn't seem to have survived.
Yeah, so we looked at that proposal, Commissioner, no, thank you. We looked at that proposal and with Public Works, that proposal on that development, which is called Site Plan A, if we were to develop in that parcel, it would impact the operations of Public Works as it is today. Now, that doesn't mean that that is the only choice we have forever. We just need some time to look at other opportunities where we can position Public Works machinery and operations in order to accommodate a development to be at that site.
Agreed, agreed. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, if we could identify Site Plan A, exactly location?
Site Plan A is on Sistrunk and 19th Avenue.
Okay.
Yes, and that is a lot that is empty, that's west of the DSD building.
The Greg Bruton Building.
The Greg Bruton Building, yes.
My good friend Greg.
All right. I just wasn't identifying it as Site Plan A. I wasn't familiar with that name for this partial land, so I know what we're talking about now. Okay.
So with that in mind, I understand that designing the project around some of the constraints with the site is an issue, always is. That's true of every development project we have. They all require, these infill projects always require a significant amount of creativity and development process between, you know, site aggregation, dealing with contamination that we have on the site, Brownsfield grants, layered subsidies, everything that goes into making, there's a reason why these sites have not been developed over the years and it's because they're not easy to do. But I think that we could still designate the funding for it and then, I know at least two interested parties that have come forward that would love to do something over there and I think that would bookend the corridor. You know, we've done a significant amount of improvement on the eastern half and now we need to start filling in. So bookending it by doing a great project on the western end of the corridor, supporting what we've already done over that way with Smitty's Wings and with the YMCA and some of these other projects with Vic George's project we've got going up there. I think continuing to invest in projects down at that end of the corridor would support everything that we're already doing. So again, my suggestion was that we take the dollars that we've identified, we target it towards a city-owned parcel and then let the developers come to us with creative ways of working around what Public Works needs on that site and what they could do to make affordable and workforce housing available. I'll share with everybody else what I said to the city manager. We talk constantly about how we have an affordability crisis and if we truly have an affordability crisis, then we need to adopt a crisis mentality. And that involves a creative use of our funds available and our land that's available to address that crisis. And so I, again, I strongly encourage targeting as much of our trust fund dollars towards the provision of affordable and workforce housing as we possibly, again, you know, if that's consistent with the district commissioner's view for the corridor.
Well, isn't that what we're doing here now?
Well, but as the vice mayor pointed out, we're only putting $4 million out of the six.
Well, because, okay, I, okay, I see what you're saying. I mean, the thing was, it was originally six for the park and I thought, and I thought the city manager was saying, okay, to be fair to the park, we'll still do, give something towards the park, but give the lion's share towards affordable housing. You know, if there's, if the city manager is agreeable with that, they'd give the entire $6 million. I just, I just didn't want a short change to Carter Park either.
Well, with that being said, my view on that is definitely the need for affordable housing, workforce housing. I think representing my district, it would be a disservice to take that particular funds and put it towards the park when we need housing.
I agree 100%.
Okay, that's where I'm making my decision based off of. And I truly believe with our budgeting team, those in finance, we'll be able to identify additional funds to do what we need to do at Carter Park.
Okay.
So this is the reason why I had the conversation with our city manager, going in this direction and understanding what's being proposed in order to be able to use the funds after paying off that balance and moving forward.
Okay, so you want to amend this item then? So instead of, instead of the $4 million, you want the entire $6 million? Is that what you're seeking?
Pay down debt $6 million?
Pay down $6 million?
That would, that would, that would allow you to have an additional $6 million available this fiscal year for whatever purpose is qualified for affordable housing.
The 2024 fiscal year.
2024, yeah. City manager, what would, what would be the remaining amount now? Would it still be, would the rest of this camp still be correct?
And the rest would go towards the other improvements that are intended here.
Streetscape, yes. The remaining 1.8881?
Yeah, yes.
For the streetscape?
Yes.
Does that include, and I'm happy to see that you have amended the camp, so you now include District 2 as well as District 3 because this CRA is District 2 and District 3? Will this cover the information that we've talked about in terms of the need for sidewalks, especially in and around the Thrive Progresso area?
Well, that's what the 1.8 is for.
I just want to make sure on the record because it doesn't specifically say that. Sidewalks and lighting? Yes, we don't have the specific amount, but we took a very rough order of magnitude estimate and are using that as a basis for those streetscape improvements.
Also, if Mr. Woods, if you would come to the podium, just want to hear your take and understanding in the direction that I would like to see District 3 go with regarding the CRA funds. The direction we're going, that I'm suggesting, it aligns with our mission and our vision for that particular area.
Yes, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Mayor and members of the commission. Yes, good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Mayor and members of the Commission or Board of Commissioners. Yes, this does align with the redevelopment plan and getting the maximum amount of affordable housing in the redevelopment area as we possibly can.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any further comments? All right, so.
So we're in a motion as amended?
Yes, I was just getting to that.
I was helping you out.
So someone like to make the motion as amended? So this would be a motion to approve M2, amending it so that there'd be a $6 million contribution towards the paydown of the existing debt to be used to then apply towards affordable housing incentive funds.
Okay, I'll move.
So moved.
I'll second. You're moving seconded? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, so M2 is approved as amended. M3, motion authorizing the reissuance of request for proposal for the purchase and development of CRA property at 790 Sistrunk Boulevard, 738 Northwest 8th Avenue, 547 Northwest 7th Terrace and 537 Northwest 7th Terrace. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any comments? There being none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Chair Trentalles?
Yes, and any further items with regard to the CRA board? There being none, that meeting is now concluded, and now we'll return to our evening meeting. Those of you who came for the evening meeting, I thank you for your patience, we just needed to get that business behind us. So let us begin by asking all those who are here in the room to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry?
Oh, awesome.
No one told me. Oh, okay.
So this is Christine Woolweaver from the fourth grade from St. Anthony Catholic School, who's going to lead us in the pledge. Christine, why don't you come over here? Oh, she's going to do it from there? Okay. Give it your all, Christine.
Okay. St. Anthony, I mean, sorry. My name is Christine, and I go to St. Anthony's. St. Anthony, I mean, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the parvick for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
That was very well done, thank you.
Hi there, hi there, thanks for coming tonight. And look what we have for you, a little gift bag, so thank you so much for doing this.
Bag bags for everybody.
It's awesome. Say hello to all of our friends at St. Anthony's, okay?
They want you to turn around and have a picture with the leader.
So let me come around.
Stay right there.
Thank you.
Great human.
Okay. Let's do this quick.
Guys, you want to?
Background.
Background.
We're all going to jump in on your picture there.
Photo bomb.
Photo bomb.
You're going to get cut off if you're standing in the background.
Oh, you want us all to come for?
Yeah.
I don't want to only have two and a half commissioners in the board.
When we get to that item, we'll pull it.
All right. Thank you, Christine, we really appreciate your being here tonight, and thank you Zoe for your, where's Zoe, did she leave? Oh, there she is. Thank you Zoe for everything. Okay, at this point, I'd like to ask everyone to please join the commission in a moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. And now I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Herbst?
Here.
Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Here.
Commissioner Sternman?
Here.
Mayor Trentalles?
Here. So we have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on resolution regarding the waiving of the procurement code per the discussion in the conference meeting this afternoon. We also have, we're removing M2. This is a motion approving purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and accessories. We're going to have a change to the consolidated budget amendment, but we'll bring that up at the time that that item comes up. Changes in the minutes, September 19, 2023, the regular meeting, page 24, fourth paragraph, change a quote "to" to "the," is this something you pointed out?
How'd you know, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. And in the CRA, in the CR1, the CAM was revised on pages four and five. Now, having said all of that, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sternman?
Here.
Mayor Trentalles?
Here. So we have a couple of agenda announcements. We have a walk-on resolution regarding the waiving of the procurement code per the discussion in the conference meeting this afternoon. We also have, we're removing M2. This is a motion approving purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus and accessories. We're going to have a change to the consolidated budget amendment, but we'll bring that up at the time that that item comes up. Changes in the minutes, September 19, 2023, the regular meeting, page 24, fourth paragraph, change a quote "to" to "the," is this something you pointed out?
How'd you know, Mayor?
Yeah, thank you. And in the CRA, in the CR1, the CAM was revised on pages four and five. Now, having said all of that, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and those items are now approved, and here we are. At this time, I'd like to ask any member of the commission if they would like to pull any of the consent agenda items for separate discussion and voting. Purpose of that is for, to discuss in greater detail any of these consent agenda items. Otherwise, the commission will vote collectively on all the agenda items, and they'll be approved as one group of agenda items. Now, if a commissioner did not pull an item that you're here to speak on, we will invite you to speak on it separately, you'll be given time to speak on it, and then we'll have the time to vote on it. So with regard to the consent agenda, Commissioner Herbst, do you have any items you'd like to pull?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
I have none, Commissioner Glassman?
None.
And Commissioner Sternman?
CR1.
CR1. Excuse me. CR1, okay. So except for CR1, I have people who signed up to speak on CM1 and CM2 and CR6. So, and CM1, rank up? Am I saying that correctly? Rank up. Pentel Alfons? Are you here? Want to come up? You're good?
Just for questions.
Okay. Duane Akerblom on CM2?
Now, can I ask you to push that button at the base of the mic? At the base of the mic? That's.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. I just wanted to speak in support of the motion approving the submittal of grant application for removal of the derelict vessels. And then in that same, like kind of related to it, I just wanted to ask one question about last week with the flooding. When it comes to tidal flooding, what's the city's policy for like mitigating the tidal flooding? Because last week I came home.
We say a collective prayer?
That's probably a good way to do it. I found, yesterday, I came home last week and there was two VAC trucks down the street from me sucking out of a manhole that had, that connected right to the canal. I went home, I saw my dock was about a foot underwater, so I went back, and sure enough, it was connected to the canal, so I told the guys, I said, hey, you're just sucking the canal down. So I just want to make sure there's no, like, because if I saw it there and I talked to some other people, at first all the residents came out and they were excited, oh, they're sucking down the floodwater, we're good to go, but they didn't realize it was connected to the canal, which connects the river to the ocean. I just want to make sure that we aren't, you know, we're tackling this the right way, because it looks good when we have trucks around. I'm all for them going and spots that are flooded, but it wasn't raining anymore, it was just literally once the tide went out.
Right.
It went down. So I just want to make sure that, because my background, I'm store manager for the City of Boca, and if someone saw that and I had to say a contractor doing that, I would be hearing it like.
All right, well, thanks for bringing that to our attention, I appreciate it.
All right, so I just like to, I talked to some of your employees and they were extremely helpful, so.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate that. Okay, and Kathy Nunnamacher, that's just for questions, correct? Wherever you are, yeah, there you are, okay, very good. All right, so someone like to move to approve all the consent agenda items?
With one exception.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, CR1. Yes, why don't we just, let's just pull that and vote on that separately, okay?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so except for CR1, it's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, so all those consent agenda items are now approved, if you're here on any of those items, you're welcome to stay with the meeting, or you, now you may leave. All right, Commissioner? Okay, now who, Laura, or who does the budget? I mean, whose item is that for CR1? Well, it's the city manager, you can do this. Okay, item A, Greg, just could you explain, you know, I guess it's due to project manager vacancies and how many vacancies, just explain that a little bit.
We have Park that's going to explain what that is and why we're moving those funds.
I can't hear you.
Hello?
Yes. Yeah, there you go.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Parle Patel, I am the Assistant Budget Manager for the Office of Management and Budget. Commissioner Sternman, what was your question?
Okay, explain to item A, if it's due to prolonged project manager vacancies, is that, could you elaborate on that?
Sure, so if we experience a project manager vacancy in the project management fund, what ends up happening is like that project manager can't charge back to the funds that they were supposed to be working on. And so if there's any vacancies, normally because they can't charge back to that fund, like the fund that it's housed in doesn't get the revenue in.
Well, how many vacancies do we have?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, but I can definitely get that for you.
And FXC funds are being used for that?
I'm sorry?
It says FXC funds were used by that? Are you sure you're on the same item? You're on Public Works as A. No, letter A, hang on. A is appropriation of fund balance for Public Works. Yes. Okay. You must be referring to a different item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I could probably explain. So the project management fund is used by a variety of departments for a variety of reasons, and so this is, this is getting from all those different funding sources, and basically it's reconciliating the fund, the project management fund.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's it. Okay, all right, so also on this item, there needs to be an amendment. Commissioner Herbst, this is on C, would it be?
Yeah, item C.
Item C.
Right.
So we need to amend that to reflect what we did in the CRA board meeting?
Correct.
Correct. All right, would someone like to introduce the item as amended to reflect the decision made in the CRA board meeting?
I will introduce the item with that amendment, so that $6 million is going towards debt service as approved during the CRA board meeting.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded, please call the roll.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida's fiscal year 2023 final all-funds budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30, 2023 as amended by appropriating, unappropriating, and transferring funds as set forth in the City Commission Agenda Memo 23-0973, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale final fiscal year 2023 through fiscal year 2027 community investment plan for the fiscal years beginning October 1, 2022 and ending September 30, 2027 as amended by appropriating, unappropriating, and transferring funds as set forth in the City Commission Agenda Memo 23-0973 and providing for severability in effective date. Commissioner Sternman?
Do you repeat that? No, no, yes, yes, yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and that item is approved. Moving on to, excuse me. Hold on a second. Okay, our next item, would someone like to introduce the item? Or actually move the item?
Moved, so moved.
Do I hear a second? We're talking about M1? M1.
Yes.
M1, this is a motion approving and authorizing the execution of revocable license with public supermarkets. Any questions? There being none, and it's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M1's now approved. M2, motion approving purchase of self-contained breathing. That's been removed, hasn't it? Oh, that's correct, I'm sorry, that's pulled. M3, motion approving termination for convenience and agreement to construct a carbon dioxide, carbon dioxide pH control system for the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M3 is now approved. M4, motion approving 11th Amendment to the lease agreement between Ivy Tower 101 Property LLC and the City of Fort Lauderdale and substantially the form provided. Someone like to move the item?
Moved.
Been moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
No.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M4 is now approved. M5, motion approving the lease agreement between Cypress Corporate Center LLC and the City of Fort Lauderdale and substantially the form provided. Someone like to move the item?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Sternman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and M5 is now approved. Moving on to the resolutions. R1, appointment of board and committee members, would you please call the names into the record?
Yes, for the December 5, 2023 resolution, Code Enforcement Board, Olivier Calais, that's a consensus nominated by Commissioner Herbst. Downtown Development Authority, Alan Hooper, nominated by Mayor Trentalles, and Fire Rescue Facilities Bond Issued Blue Ribbon Committee, Michelle Heiser, nominated by Commissioner Herbst. And for tonight's resolution, Budget Advisory Board, Melissa Milroy, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board, Ross Parker, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Guy Kemp, nominated by Mayor Trentalles. Citizens Police Review Board, Mark Dickerman, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Public Art and Placement Advisory Board, Andrew Martino, nominated by Commissioner Glassman, and that rounds it out.
Okay, are there any other amendments or modifications? There being none, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
So moved.
Introduce?
So introduced.
A resolution that City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida appointing
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida appointing or nominating, if applicable, Boarding Committee Members as set forth in the exhibit attached here to and made a part here of. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and those nominees are now appointed to those boards and committees, and I want to thank those people for their commitment to our city and for the sacrifice you make on our behalf. You're welcome. Now go to work. R2, resolution authorizing the city manager to execute FPNL easement over the city-owned property for utilities at 4950 Peters Road. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced, please call the roll.
Yeah, yeah, could you, city manager, this is, this is land that I believe is owned by the city but unincorporated.
Yes.
Okay, explain this, this is for, explain what this is about. I mean, I know in general, but it's a little word.
So this is so that there could be an easement defined so that underground utilities can be buried under that easement.
Now, is this also that area that was going to be like part of a well field too?
There is a well field nearby.
But it's not on that property per se?
It is, there are some well fields there.
Okay, but this is, this is just FPNL though, this is not the.
This is just for FPL.
Okay, okay. That's it.
All righty, the resolution has been introduced, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving an easement in favor of Florida Power and Light Company over city-owned property located at 4950 Peters Road, authorizing city manager to execute and deliver the easement and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that resolution's now been approved. Moving on to R3, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute Florida Power and Light easements over city-owned property for utilities at 528 Northwest Second Street. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced, any questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This was identified as District 3, it's actually District 2?
Darn.
Wait. Is this R3?
This is R3.
Mine says District 2.
Right.
Mine says District 3.
Mine says District 3.
Mine says District 1.
Yeah. What are you guys looking at?
Mine says Boca Raton, no. R3.
Mine says District 2 on my cam.
Okay, well, somehow.
So, so the online version on Granicas didn't get updated, but the cam says District 2.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can take it back now, everybody sees it as District 3. I'll be willing, right at the moment, to take the whole area back.
Exactly.
Sounds familiar.
Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida approving an easement in favor of Florida Power and Light Company over city-owned property located at 528 Northwest Second Street, authorizing city manager to execute and deliver the easement and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and so that resolution is now approved. R4, this is a resolution urging Florida legislative, excuse me, Florida Legislature to identify available funding sources that could be used to create a grant program or low-interest loan program or both for condominium and cooperative associations and economically vulnerable condominium and cooperative unit owners to defray the costs of deferred maintenance and repairs arising out of milestone inspections and structural integrity reserve studies. I'm not going to read the whole thing. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduce.
Introduce.
Any questions?
This is, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. This is what we discussed in conference, thank you so much.
You're welcome. This is districts 1, 2, 3, and 4. Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida urging the Florida Legislature to identify available funding sources that could be used to create a grant program or low-interest loan program or both for condominium and cooperative associations economically vulnerable condominium and cooperative unit owners to defray the cost of deferred maintenance and repairs arising out of milestone inspections and structural integrity reserve studies urging the Florida Legislature to collaborate with lending and financial institutions to create programs that would provide funding relief to condominium and cooperative associations and economically vulnerable condominium and cooperative unit owners who are especially assessed for the cost of deferred maintenance and structural repairs arising out of milestone inspections and structural integrity reserve studies urging the Florida Legislature to further amend those laws so that associations other than those operating a multi-condominium may determine to provide no reserves or less reserves than required if an alternative funding method has been approved by the Florida Division of Florida Condominiums, Timeshares, and Mobile Homes of the Department of Business and Professional Regulation and providing for distribution in effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glossman?
Just a point that this is going to take a lot more than just a resolution on our part to really communicate with the state legislators to really make something happen. It's, I just wanted to make that point that we're going to need to do a lot more than just a resolution. Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R4 is now approved. Moving on to R5, this is a resolution approving and adopting the commission legislative priorities component of the 2024 state legislative program for the city of Fort Lauderdale. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
It's been introduced. I have one person who signed up to speak, Mr. Chris Nelson, you still hear it, there he is.
Yes, Chris. Chris Nelson, live over in New River, and I meant to sign up for the last item that goes with the legislature. I want to thank you for taking that up and adding that, and I absolutely, I absolutely agree that it's going to take a lot more, I agree with Commissioner Glossman, that it's going to take a lot more pressure on the legislature that, to pay attention to South Florida. And if people in the legislature are listening, there's a crisis coming up where a lot of people are being faced with massive special assessments, so I hope that they will listen to this resolution, even if they have a lot of people that don't live in condos, because
and adopting the commission legislative priorities component of the City of Fort Lauderdale's
there's a lot of people, especially seniors who live in condo buildings, who are going
2024 state legislative program, authorizing city manager to approve any subsequent changes
to be hit with some massive special assessments due to the new condo law requiring fully-funded
to the city's 2024 state legislative program for the duration of the 2024 legislative session
reserves, requiring these milestone inspections.
and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Also, there's an area where the city may be able to help with this.
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glossman?
The city has more stringent requirements, actually I believe it's the county, but the
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
city might be able to do something about this, to do, the state requires a 30-year
Yes, and R5 is now approved.
inspection now, but the county has a more stringent requirement for 25 years.
Moving on to OSR1, this is a second reading of an ordinance amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Article 3, titled Public Beaches.
So if there's any help that, that the city can do in that regard with that county regulation,
Someone like to introduce the ordinance?
that would be great, but I want to thank the commission for adding that to the agenda,
Introduce.
The ordinance has been introduced. Anyone have any questions?
and Commissioner Glossman's 100% right, it's going to take a lot, but we, but, but thanks
Mayor, I do. So I had brought up the last time that I'd like to see this expanded to cover the hotels
for standing up for the people that own condos in South Florida.
Okay, thank you.
in the North Beach area.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this item?
I don't see that in here. Did I miss it? Am I, am I not reading that properly?
There being none, has it been, it's been introduced, so please call the roll.
Chris can explain.
Okay, because we had discussed that, and I thought we had, I thought there was a, an agreement and willingness to include those par Sanders hotels long.
That's not my recollection. My recollection is we were going to ask everyone to go back to the neighborhoods, vetted a little bit more that people did not have a chance to really discuss it in the neighborhoods, and I thought we were, had agreed that we were going to go back and have a lot more discussion.
Okay, I, your recollection may be different than mine, I'm not contradicting you, Commissioner. I thought that there was a general consensus to move forward with a pilot, including that area as well, but perhaps my recollection is incorrect, so.
My recollection was that they were going to bring it, we're going to open it for discussion at this, so we have one more shot at the apple.
Right, but I thought we were going to do that before we brought it back for the second read, so maybe that's where my.
Yeah, I can answer that. So Mayor Commissioners, Chris Cooper, Director Development Services Department, so at the last meeting when this came up, what I had said was that after speaking with the Central Beach Alliance President and the representative for the person that's the primary owner in that area that was mentioned, the North Beach area, that we would come back in 60 days with that amendment, the Central Beach asked if they could have a meeting with their membership. I think that's scheduled for next week or the week after. I met with the representative for the owner in that area last week, we came to some consensus on what that language could look like, so we'll get that to Central Beach, and they can have that conversation with their membership.
Okay.
But we said within 60 days we'd bring that amendment back to you.
Okay, all right, thank you for, for refreshing my memory on that.
Yeah, we're working on it then.
So, so that's a commitment though, as we move forward with this, as we approve this, that, that we're going to look at that, given the input from the neighborhood, but yeah, okay.
Yes, and progress has been made, so we're moving in that direction. Thank you very much, Chris, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, there being none, please call the roll.
I had Bill LeVaverre to speak.
You have not signed up, but you're welcome to speak.
I did.
Well, I don't have it, but you're welcome to speak.
As the mayor, I'd like to speak, if that's okay. Mr. Mayor, Vice, Vice Mayor Commissioners, a year ago when this was a proposed test program, I was adamantly opposed to it, totally opposed to it, and I've spent the last year doing my own private auditing. I've been to the beach at various times of the day, particularly at closing time, and I have to tell you that the hotels are doing a fantastic job. Every piece of litter is picked up. I noticed one day that a gentleman was walking to the beach, to the ocean with a drink in his hand. Right away, they went and told him that he had to come back and sit, so I did 180 turnarounds. I support this, and I'm sure you're going to pass it down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? Okay, there being none, please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City, in ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida amending Chapter 8, Article 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, titled Public Beaches by creating a new code section 8-55.4 titled Sales, Service, and Consumption of Food and Alcoholic Beverages to allow hotel owners and operators to sell, serve, and deliver food and alcoholic beverages on the public beach for consumption by hotel guests for any person renting a beach chair from a city-approved beach concessionaire and providing for definitions, providing for regulations and penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts and repeal, providing for correction of Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Sturman?
Yes.
Commissioner Herbst?
Yes.
Commissioner Glossman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beasley Pittman?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and that item is now approved. Is there any further business of the commission? There being none, the meeting is now concluded. We can now resume to our conference meeting, and right now we have commission reports. I'll start with District 1, Commissioner Herbst.
In the interest of trying to wrap this up quickly, I have no district report. We're on a roll.
I'm telling you, okay, Vice Mayor?
All righty, look like my colleague has yielded his time to me again tonight, thank you. Okay, I'd like to share some activities and opportunities I had over the last two weeks. Let's see where we want to start. On November 8, we were invited and we also attended the groundbreaking for the U. United States Federal Courthouse. I was there with our mayor, along with Commissioner Hurst, and were you there?
I'm that, I'm that, like, under the radar. I thought I meant something to you, Pam.
You mean much to me.
I gave a big hug and everything.
You're low-key at times, you know.
I'm so low-key. Yeah, I was there, yeah.
So it was a beautiful opportunity. I was very honored to be there to witness the new courthouse that the ground was broken, and looking forward to it coming into our city. Also, on, on Friday, November 11, which was also Veterans Day, we attended the Chaplain's Prayer Breakfast that was hosted by Chaplain Perkins. That was a wonderful event, and I was in the company of Commissioner Glossman and also Herbst, a wonderful opportunity as well. On November, I'm sorry.
Take your time.
So I have a lot of stuff written, I'm trying to give this only some detailed highlights that won't take up a whole bunch of our time. On Tuesday, November 14, attended the groundbreaking ceremony for the Riverside Park. I was there with also Commissioner Sturman, along with Mayor Trentalas. That was also.
And now you remember me.
Yeah, I remember you, yes. From Wednesday, November 15 through Saturday, November 18, I was in Atlanta, Georgia for the National League of Cities. That was, that was an event that we had already planned to attend, and unfortunately, we had the rainstorms, and I was really kind of uncomfortable going, but with prayer, we did move forward, and overall, we're, we're still standing as a city and, and things worked out overall. At the, at the city summit for the National League of Cities, I want to just kind of read something that I pinned, because we, as a city, was really highlighted at the city summit during the general sessions at the National League of Cities. The City of Fort Lauderdale was highlighted several times for its resilience and being innovative with moving forward and having a forward's thinking. First, it was by Mayor Woodward highlighting the city's commitment when submitting its application for Good Jobs, Good Cities, at the same time when we were experiencing the April floods earlier in the year. Fort Lauderdale, we were again was praised by Google's Vice President for our sustainability, for our commitment to the environment and the goals to reach a net zero admission for government's operations by 2024, community-wide by 2050. Also, this year, 2023 City, National League of Cities, there was a heavy focus on redevelopment of housing, education, and homelessness. The main takeaway is that I've experienced was nationwide, we are experiencing the same crises over our nation. We need to continue our dialogue with other counterparts in different states and different cities to work out solutions that fit our community. Also, I'm looking forward to continuing advocating for our needs in March during the Congressional City Conference that will be housed in, will be held in Washington, DC. And also, I'm suggesting that we consider hosting a housing and homeless summit to come up in the regions for a solution as well. Also, I want to share with upcoming events, we know that we are, oh, let me roll back, I'm sorry. Today, we participated in a turkey giveaway with the Black Police Association. It was held at Dixie Court, we were looking for you, Mayor, this morning. It was again a great opportunity. We were, it was a great opportunity, this was their 13th year, I believe it is, that they've been offering this to the community, so we're very grateful for all of those who volunteered and came out and that worked so diligently to make sure that those services are given in the community. Also, reminding everyone that on December 1, it is Light Up Six Trunk. read something that I penned, because we, as a city, was really highlighted at the city summit during the general sessions at the National League of Cities. The city of Fort Lauderdale was highlighted several times for its resilience and being innovative with moving forward and having a forward's thinking. First, it was by Mayor Woodward highlighting the city's commitment when submitting its application for good jobs, good cities, at the same time when we were experiencing the April floods earlier in the year. Fort Lauderdale, we again were praised by Google's Vice President for our sustainability, for our commitment to the environment and the goals to reach a net zero admission for government's operations by 2024, community-wide by 2050. Also, this year, 2023 City, National League of Cities, there was a heavy focus on redevelopment of housing, education, and homelessness. The main takeaway is that I've experienced with nationwide, we are experiencing the same crises over our nation. We need to continue our dialogue with other counterparts in different states and different cities to work out solutions that fit our community. Also, I'm looking forward to continuing advocating for our needs in March during the Congressional City Conference that will be housed in, will be held in Washington, D.C. And also, I'm suggesting that we consider hosting a housing and homeless summit to come up in the regions for a solution as well. Also, I want to share with upcoming events, we know that we are... Oh, let me roll back, I'm sorry. Today, we participated in a turkey giveaway with the Black Police Association. It was held at Dixie Court. We were looking for you, Mayor, this morning. It was, again, a great opportunity. We were, it was a great opportunity. This was their 13th year, I believe it is, that they've been offering this to the community. So we're very grateful for all of those who volunteered and came out, and that worked so diligently to make sure that those services are given in the community. Also, reminding everyone that on December 1st, it is Light Up Six Trunk. We're inviting everyone to come out and have a good time as we enjoy and kick off the holiday season. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Glassman?
Thank you, Mayor.
Got my own cheering section. Oh, wait a minute. The cheering section is my section.
And videographer, I might add. Thank you. Thursday, November 9th, Light Up Lauderdale in Esplanade Park, very festive, kicking off the first of the six light-up events in our city. Really nice. Congratulations to Parks and Rec and also Riverwalk for a really nice event, really well-attended. Friday, November 10th, I...
Did you forget me there, too?
I, I, I just, I didn't...
I'm so, I'm so forgettable.
That's okay. You were there. Thank you, and you made quite an impression. Friday, November 10th, we had the Public Safety Chaplaincy Annual Prayer Breakfast, a really, really nice event that really demonstrates the importance of all of our chaplains in the city. That was at the Fort Lauderdale Yacht Club. And then that evening, we did have the second light-up event at La Solis Oceanside Park, Light Up the Beach. Saturday, November 11th, I did attend with over 500 people at the Western Convention Center on the beach, the Equality Florida Broward Gala. Equality Florida is the state's largest LGBTQ-plus advocacy group, dealing with many issues in today's current climate. Very well-attended event, very well-done. Monday, November 13th, had the pleasure, actually with Commissioner Sturman, of attending the brand-new Disney Cruise Terminal in Port Everglades. I did see you were there.
It's a small world after all.
It is a small world after all. As we welcome Disney, this is going to have quite an economic impact, I believe, on our city. Instead of families having to travel to central Florida, to Cape Canaveral, to get on a Disney cruise, they can just go right over here to Port Everglades. And that part of the port, actually where the Disney terminal is, is actually in Fort Lauderdale. Yes.
Is that District Four?
That's District Four, yes, correct.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. And it was really a nice event. They did a great job repurposing that terminal. A lot of people don't realize that Port Everglades actually, three cities claim Port Everglades. Hollywood, Davie, and, oh, I'm sorry, Hollywood, Dana Beach, and Fort Lauderdale all claim...
But the best part of it's in Fort Lauderdale.
There you go. So again, that was a wonderful event that we were able to attend. Also, that day, I attended the Himishy District Open House at the Marine Industries Building. As you know, in January, as one of our goals, we did talk about the revitalization of that district because of its importance to downtown, to the Arts and Entertainment District, to all of the development that's coming along Broward Boulevard now. We had a lot of really excellent, excellent input. Thank you to staff for putting that together, and I look forward to us making progress on bringing that district back to the way many of us remember. Wednesday, November 15th and November 16th, I want to thank you, Mayor. The Mayor's Summit Against Anti-Semitism. I think no one realized, when you planned to bring that conference here, that summit here, no one realized the relevance and the timeliness of it. And I thought it was really well-done. I thought all of the sessions, and I did attend all of them, were excellent, learned a lot, met a lot of really interesting folks from all around, actually, North America. Had the pleasure of meeting mayors and city commissioners and council people from all over our country. The weather was a little, little blustery those two days, but we seemed to get through it. And then, of course, the, the two evenings, the one at the W and then one at the Hard Rock. Again, the Hard Rock, especially the closing night, when you had about, I guess, at least 200, 300 people locally joining the 200, 250 people that were at the summit, so it made for quite an evening, and those speakers were just so inspirational and the stories so emotional. So I wanted to thank you, Mayor, for bringing that to our city. Friday, November 17th, attended the Greater Fort Lauderdale Chamber Salute to Business, and one of the, we had a couple of winners that we all know, Aunt Mihai, and the Legacy Award winner was Kelly Shanley, who we know will be stepping away in his role at the Broward Center for the Performing Arts. Also, that evening, the Nuremeyer Isles Holiday Party. That's probably, I think, the first neighborhood association holiday party in the city, definitely in District Two. I don't think anyone does it earlier, but that was a really nicely-attended evening as well. Then the next day, Saturday, November 18th, hats off to everyone involved over at the Sanctuary Church on Federal for the Eighth Annual Turkey and Grocery Giveaway. Those cars start to line up on Federal Highway, probably around 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and then stretch back over Sunrise Boulevard, East and West. Thousands of cars come through that day. It really is an amazing effort to see all of the donated food, to see the hundreds of volunteers loading up the cars as they come through. It's really, it's really quite a sight to see, and the spirit is amazing, and it really shows what our city is all about. So congratulations to Michael Lobeta, who I know spearheads that, along with Pastor Black and everyone else who's involved in that. And again, thank you to our first responders for being there and making sure everything was just great that whole day from our fire and police. Thank you. Coming up, Wednesday, November 22nd, Middle River Terrace Civic Association Meeting, that's tomorrow. On the 28th of November, several things. I'll be continuing over at the port and welcoming Celebrity Cruise Line's newest ship, the Ascent to Fort Lauderdale. That evening, we have three things. We have a ribbon-cutting for Trulux on the beach. We also have styles light up downtown by the Yolo Plaza. And we also have Christmas on La Solis. All of that on November 28th. Wednesday, November 29th...
That's all in District Four?
That's...
The Christmas on La Solis?
No, Trulux is District Two. Trulux is on the beach in District Two. Why are you so focused on that, man? I'm just curious. Okay, the locations of everything. Okay. Also, I will tell you that on Thursday, November 30th, obviously, we have Light Up the Galt, looking forward to that. It's also the night of the Central Beach Alliance. And I think we also have the, do we have the ribbon-cutting of the Firehouse, right? Also, that night as well. Friday, December 1st, as Vice Mayor said, we have Light Up Sistrunk. Saturday, December 2nd, we're going to do a special Central City Alliance light-up to celebrate the new lighting in the Roundabout on 13th Street. Just a few comments.
What day is that?
The Roundabout light-up, that's Saturday, December 2nd, 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., and the lighting will be at 5:30 exactly. A couple of comments. I really wanted to thank Dr. Gasman. I know that we had a meeting. Greg was there, Public Works, Alan Dodd was there, Dr. Gasman was there. A lot of issues, and we've talked about this with King Tides and with flooding, but we had a very special meeting on Flamingo Drive in Riviera Isles. And that just reminded me that Dr. Gasman does a tour for staff, a King Tide tour, and I know that Erica from my office did attend that day. And she basically said that it was so amazing, the training, the education. So if there are people that have not done that, I would just, I would just really recommend that. You really get an education about the tidal valves, the seawalls, everything we're doing to mitigate flooding, you know, talking about stormwater, the difference between the flooding from the sea and the flooding from the sky, and how those waters interact. And again, all of the improvements that we're doing, especially with Fortify Lauderdale. So I wanted to thank Dr. Gasman and Alan and all of Public Works for all of that as well. I wanted to mention that on the second night of the Anti-Semitism Summit, unfortunately, I was not able to attend this event because of that conflict. But for those of you that do not know, South Florida Business and Wealth Magazine, also known as SFBW, has what they call the Apogee Awards, where they recognize excellence in leadership in the government category. And our very own city manager, Greg Chavaria, received that award to recognize his distinguished service in that category of, yes, of excellence, excellence in leadership government category. I've already added that to my performance review, if we ever get to it, for the city manager, and I know that I will include that, that award in my consideration. So, city manager, congratulations on receiving that. That is an honor, and not every executive. This one was specifically to recognize those in Miami-Dade, Broward, and Palm Beach Counties, and I wanted to say congratulations. A couple of items, especially since we had the storm last week, I'm hearing from a lot of people along the Barrier Island. I know that it's, it's an amazing job to clean up, but that storm was so intense for two days. Folks are still wondering if we could just move a little faster in cleaning up the A-1A corridor. That would include the wave wall, that would include the fiber-optic sliding, that would include removing a lot of the sand that's still there, especially in the La Solis Oceanside Park, at A-1A and La Solis, and all along A-1A, all the way up to, actually, almost Oakland Park Boulevard. Perhaps we can maybe talk about, at some point, doing some additional dune planting to hold some of that sand in perhaps a little bit better along the beach, but I just wanted to bring that up. I've been still hearing about it now that it's been five or six days since those two days of nasty weather. One last thing, we did distribute from the city this reimagining City Hall flyer. I'm already hearing from people today that are finding the times and the dates not to their liking. All of these dates, and I'm glad, by the way, that we are starting in December, because I do remember hearing and reading minutes where the Infrastructure Task Force thought that December was a bad time to start, but I'm glad to see that we are, actually are starting on that. But folks are saying, why do these all have to be on a Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m.? And actually, one of these Saturday mornings is actually the St. Patrick's Day Parade. So people are just finding some difficulty with these dates and times that were chosen for the reimagining City Hall workshops. And that's it for me, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sturman?
As always, I only have three things, but is Alan Dodd in the audience? Alan, like the Price is Right, come on down. Price is Right, we're going to be bidding on a, on a new car.
That's Oprah. You get a car, though.
I have just the three things I want to say. First of all, I want to thank you for the, again, my neighborhood seems to get all the floods, and we had just had a ribbon-cutting while, like, groundbreaking, and earlier that day on a new park, and later on, we could have used that sand for sandbags. I want to thank you for the response. I want to thank my neighbors, the presidents and everybody who contacted us, just to let everybody know when the storms hit. Once again, Greg and Alan were in the forefront, contacting me and speaking to me on an hourly basis, going out assessing the areas, reporting back. The presidents and all the several other residents in my neighborhood that are hooked up with us with our texting app, were in real-time texting us back and forth. We were relaying the information to the city manager, who was going out and being very proactive about that. Mr. Dodd, we normally would have one pump in the combined Edgewood and River Oaks area, and we eventually up to, what was it, five or six that we eventually scaled up to?
Commissioner, we ended up with five pumps in River Oaks, and we had one down in Edgewood in the southwest corner.
So we scaled up significantly, so for people who don't realize that, Mr. City Manager or Alan, either one of you, how many vacuum trucks did we, were able to supplement with?
So we normally have three vacuum trucks and one pumper truck that was out operating. We got up to 11 trucks in total with contracted augmentation.
And that was all done, Mr. City Manager, the day of the storm, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what we've learned from the other floods, and I know it's still flooding, I know we're still working on it, it's not, it's not, you know, I guess next year, we're looking forward to it being fully implemented, but we are, we're learning how to react, and I want to thank you for your help with that. And, Mr. City Manager, your staff, as always, you added extra police high clearance vehicles, you got overtime for fire rescue, all within minutes of identifying the problem, and I want to thank you once again. And thank my neighbors for the feedback you gave me. We relayed it back and forth to a conversation. I think we're learning every time we get better at this. Mr. Dodd, thank you for your service so much. Okay, that's number one. Number two, just two very quick announcements. We're going to have two more of my very successful town halls. Next one is going to be on Monday, Monday at 6:30 at Broward General. Is that correct, 6:30?
Yep.
We have been partnered with the Department of Transportation. They asked us to be the lead with this. We're going to be discussing, of interest to everybody, the commuter rail, the south part of the commuter rail, the part that goes up to the river. We're not crossing the river, but giving everybody information and updating that exciting commuter rail project that's going to connect us to Dade County from Broward General on south. Should be very interesting. I encourage everybody to attend. Once again, it's going to be 6:30 at Broward General Medical Center this coming Monday. And we have one more town hall coming up. It's going to be early January. The date and location are not set yet. We do have a location. We're going to be announcing it probably next meeting. We have goal-setting coming up at the beginning of next year, and we're inviting everybody to the district to participate in our town hall to give feedback, because I'm going to need your help from the community to see what we want to prioritize in for the next coming year. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Very good. Just a couple of things myself. Excuse me. I had the, the honor of reading at Harbordale Elementary for their Celebrity Readers' Day to, I think it was 60-something eighth graders, and very smart kids at Harbordale, and I really appreciate... Huh?
Eighth graders?
Eight-year-olds, I meant to say. Did I say eighth graders? I'm sorry, I meant eight, I meant eight-year-olds. I'm sorry. No, no. I'm not smarter than a fifth grader, let alone an eighth grader. Yeah. Whatever I read to them was probably banned by the governor, so... Then we, and then that, that afternoon, of course, we had the groundbreaking for the US Courthouse. But I just want to say this. I think it's been repeated here multiple times, how much effort it took to, to get the funding for that. And our hat goes off to our now Commissioner Herbst for all the trips he made to Washington and all the meetings he attended and participated in for trying to facilitate that funding. And so, thank you, John, for all the work you did all those years to make this a reality. And it almost wasn't a reality, as we now realize how difficult it is to see these things through the end, but, but your initial efforts certainly brought that to home, brought that home, so really appreciate that, John.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could, I would like to acknowledge the one person who was really working behind the scenes, didn't get a lot of notoriety about it, but that was Chris Wren. Chris Wren, when he was running the DDA, was truly, truly instrumental in shepherding all of that through, bringing Susan Lent onboard. I got voluntold to be part of that project, so he was really, again, instrumental in that. So, but thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
You're welcome. As was mentioned, we had a number of light-up ceremonies, Esplanade Park, Oceanside Park, and the Veterans Day Ceremony was also very touching, as we continue to think about overseas aggressions that are taking place, and the men and women who serve our country and protect us. It was another opportunity to thank them and to, and to respect them, and to remember those who have, who have died in protecting our communities. It was also mentioned about Riverside Park, the groundbreaking. Wasn't much of a groundbreaking, because it's not about building something, it's about mostly park improvements, but it was really great to see the community come out and fully appreciate what we're trying to do to improve the opportunities for kids and families to get together at these, at these local parks. And Riverside Park is a beautiful park in a beautiful neighborhood, and it was great to show how their Parks Bond money is being used. I can't, I couldn't possibly conclude tonight without talking about the Combat Anti-Semitism Summit. That was first something that was thought about, that took place in Europe last year, and Fort Lauderdale was the first and only opportunity for it to appear in North America. The fact that they chose our community is, was an honor, and, and all the people that attended it, governors, excuse me, mayors from California, from Ohio, from the New York area, just, it was just an amazing opportunity for us to exchange ideas and best practices. Some very scholarly people were there and really opened our eyes to a lot of opportunities that we can have to try to defeat, all kinds of hate, all kinds of bigotry, and all, and indeed, anti-Semitism as well. So we really appreciate that opportunity. I want to thank also the Hard Rock, the Seminole Hard Rock Casino, for sponsoring and underwriting the evening event, the Thursday evening event. Thank you so much for your generosity, and you just did a great honor to our community by hosting that. On the 17th, we had the opening of the honorary Lithuanian consulate here in Fort Lauderdale. The ambassador from Lithuania was in attendance, a very nice lady, and so now we have a consulate from Lithuania here in Fort Lauderdale. So. The Salute to Business Dinner, which took place at the Museum of Discovery and Science. It's a great opportunity to finally, to give our thanks to Kelly Shanley for the wonderful years he has brought to our community, all the great shows. He certainly laid a foundation for the kind of cultural experience that we can continue to enjoy. I have not met the new, his successor, but hopefully, he'll, he'll do a great job in moving our community forward with all of its cultural opportunities. The City Employee Picnic. It was a great day, sprinkled a little bit here and there, but it was great to see all the families of our employees there, and, and I appreciate the city staff for, for hosting that, and for Parks and Rec for organizing it, and, and everybody for participating in it. It was just a great day for everyone to be out there, and I love to see that every year. Maybe, we're going to get it back to Snyder Park, though, next year, right? I think that's... I think that's a better place than, Mills Pond was great, but, you know, Snyder Park was still a better, a better site.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Yeah, okay. That, on the, that same day, I also participated in the turkey giveaway. We gave away thousands of, not just turkeys, but full meals for like several days. I just want to thank all those organizations and individuals who contributed to this. I mean, hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of material and product were donated for this effort. People were lined up from the early morning hours to stay in line to, to be able to be recipients of this generosity, and, and I just think that, I mean, there aren't a lot of communities that do this, and I'm so proud of Fort Lauderdale. And it wasn't just Fort Lauderdale families that were, that were there, the people from other areas came, and I feel very proud that Fort Lauderdale was able to help all families that, that are in need and can finally enjoy a great Thanksgiving feast. So to that end, I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, which is this Thursday, and, and I think that, once again, we're, we're very blessed to live in a community such as Fort Lauderdale with everything that we have, and, and I want to thank everybody here on the commission for all the great meetings that we've had all year long and all the things we've together tried to do to make Fort Lauderdale a better place. And I thank God for maintaining our health and, and giving us continued opportunities to continue to work in our roles here as a city commission. There are a couple of things that were not mentioned. First of all, December 1st, we have the Breakfast of Champions at the Homeless Assistance Center. This is where we get to shine, and we get to decorate a table, and hopefully, as many of us on the commission can participate as celebrity waiters, because it's really a great time. It's the only time I ever get up at 7:00 a.m. to, to participate in anything, and so I'm, I look forward to that. Later that morning, at the Galleria Mall, we'll be celebrating World AIDS Day. That'll be at 8:30 or 9:00 o'clock. It says 8:30 here, but I think it's 9:00 o'clock at the, again, at the Galleria Mall, in recognition of World AIDS Day. Finally, December 4th, there will be a 10-year anniversary, recognizing Bonnie Clearwaters being the, the director of the NSU Art Museum. What a great honor it is for us to bestow on her this recognition. She's been absolutely amazing in bringing substance and notoriety to our museum and to our community here in Fort Lauderdale. Couple things. The people in Bell Harbor, who I know they've spoken to the commissioner as well as myself regarding wanting to acquire a small parcel of property next to the Full Gospel Church and build, and to establish a pocket park there. I know in the Parks Bond, we set aside some money for future acquisition, so I'd like to bring it to the attention of our city manager to see what opportunity there may be for us to acquire that property.
So, thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up. I've been in touch with the neighborhood, obviously, and also with the city manager's office on this issue now for a while, as has my staff. I'll let Greg just tell you the current status of that, but we've already reached out to, to the folks over there, and we're, I believe, at the stage of getting an appraisal, but I'll let, I'll let Greg describe it.
Yeah, we did order appraisal. However, we know that the owner is looking to do development plans for that area, so we have not had success with being able to contact the owner and see if there was any interest to do something different.
Okay. Okay, whatever we can do to move that forward would be great. Chula Vista, the neighbors have been complaining about moving ahead with stormwater improvements, but the problem is, we need access to some of the area, and there are neighbors that don't want to give the city access. So I don't know how else to get that message across. If we can't have access to the, to the areas that need help, we're not gonna get anything done. So, Commissioner, the job is yours to go there and convince people to give us access.
You got it.
Because it's really a shame that, all right. The Old Federal Courthouse. The General Service Administration has contacted me and the city manager to ask us, what do we want to do with the Old Federal Courthouse? I think we need to convene some neighborhood charrettes to see what we want to do. Do we want to, does the city want to take possession of it? What use would we have for it? What opportunities might there be if we tore it down or kept it? I think that the, the federal government wants us to not tear it down, but they also want to hear neighborhood input. So at some point, let us get together and maybe hold a series of community charrettes, maybe you can do it. This is in District Two, so, but it really affects every, everyone in the whole city. So think about how we can move forward on this, because I think it's an asset that we should consider in some way, and I don't know what way that is. I'd like to see what, what ideas the community might have. And that's it. I have nothing else?
Could I, something that slipped up under the radar, you mind if I jump on in?
Sure.
Okay. Oh, by the way, I think there's a lot of, a lot of mold there. Maybe we could make a penicillin factory out of the courthouse. Something that fell through the cracks, I did want to, to mention briefly. We did have the Fort Lauderdale International Film Festival in the heart of my district. That was November 3rd through 12th, internationally recognized fantastic event, and I just want to...
I did attend their opening night, and it was, it was really great. What was the name of the movie? Michael, oh darn. It was about, it was about a football guy who aged out, and then they called him back, and it was one of those hero stories, yeah.
So I want to thank everybody involved in that endeavor. Truly a gem of the city. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Michael, you're welcome. Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Yes, I have a few items. Number one, I will raise the comment about the workshops for the City Hall Visionings sessions and see if there's other dates that ITF would consider as they are leading this charge. And also let them know about St. Patrick's Day Parade. Also, wanted to just confirm that you all are available to do the joint meeting December 5th at 1:00 p.m. at County Chambers, and for that, we will then start our conference at 2:30 p.m., if that's okay with everybody.
How are they going to seat us?
However you would like.
Well, they're gonna be on a dais, and where are we gonna be? Last time we had a joint meeting, we had it in a conference room, which I think is the most appropriate way to, if we can, if we can do that, that would be best.
I thought we were in their commission chambers. We all sat where their officers.
No, we weren't in it, we weren't, oh, we did that.
We did.
We did that once, yes, you're correct. So see how that works, because we displaced their charter officers, I remember that.
I will let them know your preference. So we will start our 2:30, our conference meeting at 2:30 p.m. Additionally, just want to let you know, because this is dear to you, everyone in the dais, is the sidewalk master plan survey is active until December 15th. We have that on our website, and we sent out an announcement earlier today. We'd like to ask everyone, all the commissioners and mayor, can please let respective communities know about this, this master plan survey for sidewalks. Additionally...
By the way, let me just back up for a second. 2:30 is, is being, is being unrealistic, because if we're gonna have a serious conversation, it took us three hours today, and it was just us, and you know they're, they're gonna want to talk too, so if we, if there's, if there's a way, if, I mean, if we can just make that entire afternoon, the, the meeting between us and the, is there anything else that's coming up that's a consequence that we need to discuss?
There was a Parks Bond update. I know that Commissioner Sherman wanted to talk about certain parks.
Can we defer that?
Oh, sure. I mean, that's, that's, it's not a Parks Bond, it was bond, just a workshop on how much bond capacity we have, and that's, sure, that's not...
That's not time sensitive.
No, not by any stretch.
Okay. So let's just, let's just be fair to the community, don't have them sit around here waiting for us to come back when we really may not be back as soon as 2:30. So I think we should just reserve that whole afternoon to that discussion.
Okay, so we will just carry on with regular meeting, and that will be at the Broward Performing Arts Center.
Okay.
December 5th. We will have two December meetings there.
What, what time is the, is the joint session?
1:00.
And that, where's it gonna be?
At the, at the county government chambers.
Okay, but they're, okay.
Okay?
Yes.
You got it.
Also, want to thank members of the commission that were able to attend Coffee with the Chief. It was very successful, a lot of people were able to meet the chief and staff, and very impressed with the operations. And just want to let everyone know that all police operations are now out of 1515 Cypress Creek Road. Additionally, I will be out of the office starting tonight. Anthony Fajardo will be acting until Sunday evening when I return, and he is available for any...
Going turkey hunting?
Something like that. And also, what we will be doing, starting next commission meeting, we are going to be putting forward all the different requests that we have received from the dais with the status updates, so that you all have a chance to see those, the progress on anything that you all have requested here, and that way we have better accountability for what you all have requested. So with that said, those are my comments.
Okay. Tom, you have any report? You're good? Okay. If, is there any further business of the commission? There being none? Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.